It is now 5:00 PM, Tuesday, December 17, 2019. And I call to order the Victorville City Council, Victorville Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, Victorville Water District and the City Housing Assets Accessor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Cox?
Here.
Councilmember Gomez?
Present.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Protemmer Ramirez?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here. There's no one in the audience that would like to address the council, therefore can we have declaration of closed session items by our city attorney, please?
Yes, thank you Mayor Garcia. We have four items this evening, three of which are existing litigation. Items A and B are for the city council. They're exist-- sorry, item A is real property negotiations pursuant to government code 54956.8, and the property APNs and the negotiating parties are set forth on the agenda. The remaining three items, B, C, and D, are all existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D1. Item B is for the city council. Items C and D are for the airport authority, and the case names and case numbers are set forth on the agenda. To the extent there is reportable action, we will report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the six o'clock regular session.
Thank you. At this time, we will recess to our closed session, and our regular session will convene at 6:00 PM. Victorville Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, Victorville Water District and the City Housing Assets Accessor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Cox?
Here.
Councilmember Gomez?
Present.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Protemmer Ramirez? Mayor Garcia?
Here. At this time, can we have closed session announcements by our city attorney, please?
Yes, thank you Mayor Garcia. We had four items this evening. The first item was real property negotiations pursuant to government code 54956. The APN numbers and the negotiating parties are set forth on the agenda. The other three items, one on behalf of the city council, the other two on behalf of the airport authority, were existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, and the case names and the case numbers are all set forth on the agenda. At this time, there is no reportable action with respect to any of those items.
Thank you. At this time, we will have the invocation by Pastor Joseph Gotti-Bay-- did I pronounce it correctly? And then our pledge of allegiance by Police Chief Rick Bassinger. So please stand.
Let us pray. Father, thank you for the opportunity that you have given to me to pray here in front of the city council of Victorville. Lord, I know that in the book of Romans, it says that everyone must submit to the governor authorities, for all authority comes from God, and those in the position of authority have been placed there by God. Therefore, because your word is truth, we thank you for placing each board member here this evening. We thank you for giving them a servant's heart to serve this city and its many residents within our juris-- within their jurisdiction. Lord, we ask for your guidance and presence to fill this room so that decisions can be made morally, justly, and unselfishly. Lord, be with everyone here that is listening, watching, and actively taking part in this meeting. Be with those here that will be addressing their concerns or thoughts regarding their city. Be with the city council, and may your presence, the God of peace and order, fill this room. Lastly, we know that in your word, it says that whatever you ask in my name, that I will do, that the Father may be glorified in the Son. If you ask anything in my name, I will do. So that the Father may be glorified in the Son, we will ask in Jesus' name, knowing that you will meet us here, to answer these prayers according to your word and your timing. May everyone in this room have a great Christmas and a safe New Year, in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you, guys.
This evening, we do have a presentation of plaque of appreciation to City of Victorville by Sharon Green, Executive Director of Victor Valley Family Resource Center.
Good evening, council. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity. I am Sharon Green with Victor Valley Family Resource Center. I'm also on the Interagency Council of Homelessness for countywide. I'm also the Chair of the Homeless Provider Network for the countywide. I am so overwhelmed with the issue of homelessness in our community, the fact that the City of Victorville is the second highest number, has the second highest number of homeless population in our county. I want to commend this council for the efforts that you are taking in order to help end homelessness in the community. We realize that when we don't provide housing, when we don't provide services, that it creates a safety issue for our community. I've been here for over thirty years, and I've raised my children here. And this is the first year that I've seen Victorville really get in, move into action, and really start trying to make a difference with that, with the numbers in that way. I appreciate being able to serve with Mr. Metzler and Ms. Smith on the Interagency Council, but I thought I'd want to present a certificate, an award of recognition for your efforts in ending, in this effort. And it says, "To the City of Victorville, with deepest appreciation for your unwavering commitment and amazing dedication to our communities, from Victor Valley Family Resource Center." Thank you very, very much.
You can give it to our city clerk, please. Thank you so very much. It's very highly appreciated. At this time, if there is any agenda item that may be a conflict of interest to any council member or members should be identified at this time, do we have anyone that has a conflict?
I believe Councilmember Cox may on item number fourteen.
Fourteen?
That is based on his residence on the golf course, and that issue deals with trees on the golf course.
Ma'am, thank you, Mr. Attorney. I was going to make that declaration, but I was waiting on the clerk to present the agenda, so apologies.
So I'd like to ask, typical protocol, I'm sure it's not on the policy handbook, but would I have expected the person in conflict to direct it, or with the city attorney? Or does it even matter?
I had asked the city attorney if it was a conflict.
Oh, okay.
Had advised me that, in his opinion, it was, and I agreed.
Thank you.
At this time, we will be moving on to public hearings. And the first item that we have is an approval of a notice of exemption and award of construction contract for SCLA Industrial Sewer Manhole Rehabilitation Project. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
That the Victorville Water District Board of Directors approve the notice of exemption for the SCLA Industrial Sewer Manhole Rehabilitation Project and award a construction contract to Sancon Technologies Incorporated for SCLA Industrial Sewer Manhole Rehabilitation Project, number BM 20-018, in the amount of $468,680.
Thank you. At this time, council members, do you have any questions of staff at this time? Anyone?
Yes. So for this item? So I understand that the notice of exemption is procedural, but what is the actual purpose? I understand the procedural part of it, but in terms of this, if you can contextualize it and tell the council a little bit more of the impacts of the corrosion and the further degradation of this project?
It's typical for us to-- can you hear me okay? It's typical for us before any construction project that might have an environmental impact to make sure that we have environmental clearance, sequoia clearance. This is a rather routine procedure. So we included that with the agenda item as one of the first actions, and that's typically a public hearing. Even if it's a notice of exemption, it'd typically be a public hearing instead of just a written item.
Thank you. No further questions.
Anyone else? Questions? Thank you. Those were all the questions. At this time, I open the public hearing. I do not have any speaker cards. I close the public hearing, and I request a motion in a second.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the Victorville Water District Board of Directors take action in accordance with the recommendations set out on the agenda.
I need a second.
A second?
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments?
Yes, you know, I did ask the impacts of degradation and corrosion, and it failed, it slipped my mind that that was not answered. It was just the process of sequoia and those issues, but the impacts of corrosion for the project were not addressed.
Sorry, I didn't answer that part of it. Over time, these are concrete manholes, and over time, because of the corrosive nature of the effluent in the industrial sewer main, it's caused some corrosion of the concrete itself. And so this project will line it to be resistant to future degradation and corrosion. So basically, some of the concrete has pockets or scales that have developed on the surface. Does that adequately answer your question?
Just the last part, you said it had gradations of sorts?
A degradation. It's deteriorated over time. The concrete isn't as smooth, and it doesn't meet our current specifications, basically.
Thank you.
Maybe, maybe as a way to illustrate, I think the way I visualize it, easiest way to describe is perhaps thinking of flat service concrete, maybe a sidewalk where it gets a smooth finish. And what I remember seeing in this degradation that we're talking about is that smooth finish effectively gets eroded as the, whether it's the acidic or the basic effluent traveling through that concrete actually erodes that smooth surface to where it starts exposing some of the aggregate that is in the concrete itself.
Thank you.
Any further comments? I have a motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to item number two, proposed ordinance number 2401, amending section 080 of chapter four to title 10 of the Victorville Municipal Code and establishing increased fines for unlawful water connections. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council conduct a public hearing to receive citizen comments regarding ordinance number 2401 and the municipal code amendment, including as attachment A of the ordinance, and introduce and waive further reading of ordinance number 2401, which amends section 080 of chapter four of title 10 of the Victorville Municipal Code.
Thank you. Once again, council members, if you have questions of staff at this time, three-minute time limit. Ms. Jones?
I have none. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Ramirez?
I have a question. How did you determine that the fee or the fine should be $1,000?
In, good evening. In consultation with our city attorney and considering the gravity of a illicit water connection and the dangers to the fresh water supply, we saw that the government code section does allow us to impose fines in that magnitude, and we felt that it was fitting for that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, so we're talking about unlawful water connections, and you referred to them as illicit violations. I'm going to presume that this is not anything discretionary. Last time, we saw a lot of pictures, and they're very interpretive. So my question is, where is it on our policy or on ordinance specifically determining what unlawful water connection looks like, is, and is not?
So really, an unlawful water connection is anything that's not been permitted by the water district. You're required to come to the district and fill out an application and apply for whatever type of water service you're looking for. So an illegal connection is one that has just not been run through the water district.
So in other words, do I have access to the written format of where this is detailing what you just specified? Because I don't have any handbook that tells me water connection, if this is connected this way and it's missing this portion of it, it's considered an illicit violation?
Well, again, it's just anything that's not been permitted by the water district. You're not allowed to touch our water lines without our permission. You have to come through us to, so we can, you know, vet what you're doing and to keep our water supply safe.
Okay, so then, in other words, that seems like it would be something external, like someone that doesn't have access or a permit. But now, what if someone does have a permit, but it was Jimmyed or Mickey Mouse or anything like that? Would that apply to also that?
Sure, because the permit doesn't allow you to do that. It only allows you to connect via the means identified and to use that connection for the purposes you've said. You can't come in and do other things to our water system or make other connections.
Okay, so do you have access to that format, those papers that would tell me what it is specifically? Because I'm not getting the verbiage and the phraseology of that.
So, Madam Mayor, if I might, I think, I think the, to start this conversation off, the document that you're speaking to, I think more so is the standards of the water district, the design standards that are a part of the water district's acceptable types of systems. So for example, if a new project is going to develop, they're going to develop a water system, in this particular case, that meets the design standards that are acceptable to the water utility. And anything that's designed to the water district standards will get a permit to actually construct as a part of the development. And then, of course, when the project is complete, then presuming everything was, is constructed and completing, completed to plan, then it gets finalized. And typically, and just to illustrate why this item is here, is typically that occurs to where we have permitted water systems, private water systems connecting into public systems. And if it's a project that goes through our system and is permitted, it's very common to have required a thing called a backflow device to prevent any contamination back into our system. These illegal connections that we're talking about typically occur after a project is developed, already been approved, and it's somebody just seeing a water line, a water valve, and connecting to it because it's a water source. And those effectively are the types of connections that we're trying to protect against, because they don't have, we don't have anything that shows that they've actually been built to our standards, permitted, and in fact, protecting the rest of the system.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, but I'm going to ask again. So there are, there are written documents that would, if you highlight it, that would say, "This permitted process states this." It's not discretionary?
We have design standards that explain what's an acceptable system.
Thank you. No further questions.
Oh, no, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, at this, thank you so much. At this time, I open the public hearing. I do not have any speaker cards. I close the public hearing. Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance number 2401.
Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville regarding an amendment to section 10.04.080, increasing penalties for illegal water connections.
Thank you. At this time, I need a motion in a second.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the city council take action in accordance with the recommendations set forth on the agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Yes, last time, I believe that we talked about this. I would have presumed that public hearing would have been a consent calendar, but I don't know, so I don't have that clarification. So I see this as a public hearing, but I remember last time, we had everything jumbled first, and then the second meeting, everything kind of became bifurcated to some regard. And so to me, this is kind of confusing. We were talking about the fees, and I don't know if the fees for this one were the same for the cannabis usage, which was something that we had quarrelled about significantly. And so looking at the thousand and then the increase with a subsequent violation to 2,000 and 3,000 respectively, I don't think we ever got a formulaic way of looking at it, but it was more of a, this is what we're putting out there. So my votes go pertaining to what I remember I had voted previously, and those are the same annotations that I need to make for the archives of this record.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no.
Now we move on to item three, proposed ordinance number 2403, amending section 010 of chapter 44 to title six, as the various sections of chapter 44 to title six of the Victorville Municipal Code to establish ordinances prohibiting various forms of littering and increase littering fines. Madam Clerk, will you please read the recommendation?
That the city council conduct a public hearing to receive citizen comments regarding ordinance number 2403 and the municipal code amendment, including it on attachment A of the ordinance, and introduce and waive further reading of ordinance number 2403, which includes an amendment to section 010, chapter 44, title six of the Victorville Municipal Code.
Thank you. Council members, any questions of staff? Anyone?
Yeah. So I'm looking at this item, and it's also a public hearing. It's my understanding that we did the Dump It Right logo or something like that that appears on a lot of the bus stops. So I think we've already discussed this item in full length. So as I see this, just the Dump It Right makes me understand that this is just recursory. It's redundant. I don't know if it is. It looks like it's a new process, but we've talked so much about it that I feel, why are we looking at this again in terms of an ordinance?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the Dump It Right campaign was, was kind of a precursor to where we're at today, and I think what we've got illustrated in the staff report is a outline that suggests the Dump It Right campaign was a part of our larger awareness program. When we adopted our rates earlier in the year, we adopted our rates, recognizing that illegal dumping was a major issue, and from our perspective, shouldn't be an issue, given the variety of different resources that are available for free, in many cases, to our residents. So the Dump It Right campaign is still ongoing, and it's really intended to be a continuous program to create just awareness of what we have available, so that you're not necessarily thinking you have to dump out in the, in the desert or the open space, just to save money because of the free resources that we're, that we're offering. Notwithstanding that, we believe our campaign has been helpful, but it certainly hasn't been able to solve or rectify the issues. We still realize illegal dumping in our open spaces, and we do have to spend human resources and a lot of time to clean up those sites. So effectively, this, along with the other items, similarly, we're trying to curb behavior of our residents and those that aren't residents that are using our deserts to dump in, and effectively creating a much more meaningful fine, really to try to curb the behavior and make it more punitive for those that still want to undertake this illegal behavior.
Is there a limit to the Dump It Right campaign? And then the second question is, how much, how much of this is used in terms of our city employing exercising, if they exercise anything, or is it just BRTech doing this?
As to the first question, I'll rely maybe on George or Sophie to hit the second question, but as to the first question, we don't have any time restriction on how long the Dump It Right VV campaign is going to go. We believe it's working, it's catchy, so we're going to continue to use it so long as we can budget for it.
Let me redefine the question. If I'm a consumer and I'm going to throw trash and I want seven pickups a year, is there a limit? Eight, nine, ten, twelve, fifteen? That's what I meant.
Oh, that's a different question, and that's a solid waste question, maybe not exactly on point with this issue, but if we don't have an answer amongst the three of us, immediately, we can get you an answer on that, because it likely involves a different division.
Can you explain why it's not pertinent to here?
Your question sounds as if it's more related to solid waste pickup, the hauler of Victorville disposal, and that's not exactly related to what we're talking about.
The solid waste and Dump It Right, Victorville has nothing, they're not related at all?
So what you're referring to are all of the legal and free dumping services that we offer as a city, and the item that we're dealing with, the ordinance is specifically dealing with those fines imposed on those who choose to illegally dump.
Okay, thank you. And then the second question, if you, you want me to repeat it?
It was as far as the human resources, who basically, what kind of time are we spending on the illegal dumping cleanups?
The second one has to do with, are we employing our city staff to be a part of this, or I thought it was just BRTech?
So Mr. Duran, actually, much of his code enforcement team's time is spent dealing with illegal dumping, as well as out of our community services department. We have a team of four full-time employees that spend time going around every day and responding to the sites that are identified either by code enforcement or by the public calling in. So I don't have hours, but we have four full-time positions dedicated to cleanup, as well as numerous hours a week by the code enforcement team.
So then, that means that we have four people out at least an hour a day for the longevity of the day, either responding or looking out for something like this and addressing it? Is that the case?
They're actively responding to clean up certain areas that are reported in conjunction and in coordination with code enforcement, who's responding to investigate some of those sites, to hopefully attempt to identify the culprit if it's an illegal dumping.
And if that's the case, are you addressing it in terms of wiping out that garbage there, or you just leave it there because you can't assess the investigative process?
Very often, we are there to abate it.
Very often, or all the time?
Very often.
Thank you.
There are some situations, like concrete, for example, that make it very difficult to come back, and we end up abating it on a later date.
Oh, thank you.
Concrete might be example, concrete would be an example. I think one of the more recent ones, we ran into a hazardous materials type situation to where we couldn't deal with it right then and there. We actually had to have a specialty team brought in to deal with the hazmat element.
No further questions, thank you.
Anyone else?
I do, Madam Mayor, may I? Thank you. All right, so on the cover page for this agenda item, under the subject, it talks about establishing ordinances prohibiting various forms of littering and increase littering fines. So am I to understand that that, that term littering is used in the most broad sense? Because on page 44, we have definitions then of refuse and refuse and rubbish, rubbish. So are those included in the various forms of littering?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I have, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Those are all the questions, thank you. At this time, I open the public hearing. I do not have any speaker cards. I close the public hearing, and I will ask our city clerk to please read the ordinance number 2403.
Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville regarding the regulation of littering and amendments to chapter 6.44.
Thank you. At this time, I need a motion in a second.
I move staff recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. Any further comments?
Yes. If I may, I've raised the issue before, Madam Mayor and council. We have a lot of tire shops in town that have-- We have a lot of tire shops in town that are very busy and now if you look in some of the businesses, tires are stacked beyond the six-foot fence against the building. I can give you four locations if anybody cares. Seems to me that used to be a fire hazard, maybe no longer is. I sure hope they don't have a fire because you get those kinds of tires, like a couple of hundred tires in each of these locations. And I have been told that tires will be taken free. I know the city takes a limited number free, but I know the cement plants burn those. Is there some way that staff can facilitate getting rid of that fire hazard? My opinion is fire hazard. We're addressing trash and litter and waste tires. I thought I'd bring it up.
We'll look into that and I'll get with you, Councilmember Cox, to get those locations.
Any further comments? Motion made by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to consent calendar. Consent calendar items four through eleven can be approved with one motion. Unless there is an item that needs to be pulled for...
There's a couple of items that either have comment or questions in regards to them. Those are, except C eight and C ten, the rest I have questions or comments about.
Eight and ten?
The exceptions are eight and ten. So I have a question on C four, C five, C six, C seven, C nine, and C eleven. And we can leave those to the end.
Did you want to make your comments? You have three minutes for eight and ten? Were those the two?
No, those are, C eight and ten are the ones I don't have comments, but all the others.
Have comments. Do we move those to...
That would take a motion to move those, which would need to be seconded. If not, you'd vote on the entire consent calendar. So is that your motion?
Yeah, we can, yeah, put them at the very end. It's fine.
So what I'm understanding is there's a motion by Councilmember Gomez to move items C four, C five, C six, C nine, and C eleven to, they would occur at the end of written communications, part of the agenda.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies?
Okay, so then I'm going to go ahead and speak as a public commenter on all these. So do I just go?
If it's okay with you, you could speak from right here. Yeah.
Okay, so let me start off by, I got the memo as everybody else did. The memo says, change in agenda format. With this agenda for future agendas, please note a minor change to the format to include continuous pages throughout instead by section. So I'm used to seeing this at a particular page, so I named them C four, C five, six, seven, you know, and so forth. But to be honest with you, it threw me off because I'm like, well, where's consent calendar, C one through three? There's no notification on hard copy stating why there was a lack of consecutive enumeration. It just begins with no standardization of one, two, and three. I wanted to hear some feedback on that. I wasn't in the meeting, whoever decided this. But for C four, I wanted to understand in terms of contextualizing what we had when we changed from the county to our own fire department. This report, I wanted to have it contextualized within the savings of supposedly the first year, which is not listed within this reporting. And then for item C five, I need to make sure that my vote is a no on that, on C six. My vote needs to be consistent with the former one, which is also a no vote, so that needs to go for a no. For item C seven, I'm also going to be consistent in terms of the fireworks and the illegal usage and how we came up with a formulaic figure, monetary figure. My vote for that one is also no, which is to be consistent with my former agenda item. For C seven, I noticed that there's an unnatural and unexplained trend in expenditures. I would like to be able to address if there was a recurring revenue that matches a recurring expenditure. Have an explanation, perhaps there was a one-time expenditure or perhaps a one-time revenue appropriations that's happening, but it's not contextualized here. So if you look at a trend, I see the increases of our commercial demand double, more than doubling, which really does bother me because there's no need for that unless you can explain a one-time recurring expense. That's not explained for that item. And lastly, for the runway, the easement in connection with the project, I wanted to see if there's a connection with the runway and I wasn't sure if there was.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, as to the question about the airport item, which I understand to be C eleven, that does not have anything to do with the runway. This is more directly related to the site that is the expanded Newell Rubbermaid site. They had to relocate some overhead utilities to, so that they didn't obstruct with the buildable area. Page one forty-eight is actually the best illustration of where that's located, nowhere close to the runway system. As to the agenda format, and I just appreciate your patience with the agenda. It does look slightly different. This is going to be a work in progress. We're administratively behind the scenes, actually working to automate the agenda prep and delivery to you, which involves the integration of a new software system. We're actually in that process right now, so it's not perfect. Certainly not as perfect as what you're used to seeing, but we're hoping to get there over a few iterations. We're just going to have to work out some bugs with respect to the numbering.
And then I needed to make one clarification, which Mr. Councilmember Cox brought to me last time. When I was making a vote of an abstention, I did correct myself and rescinded and it was a yes vote for Mr. Cox. I don't know if the city clerk annotated that way, but I was told it was a different annotation. So that's for C eight. If that does not reflect that, I want the record to reflect that.
I realize I didn't answer the question as to commercial demand. I think the important thing to take away from this particular item is notwithstanding the volatility that you'll see in the number, whether it goes up or goes down in between our council meeting or from council meeting to council meeting. I think the important takeaway, regardless of the volatility, is that it's within budget. Just the nature of our business, it changes from week to week, from month to month. And so with that, it's really kind of hard to make a straight line correlation from period to period because so much changes, you know. The type of business that we do changes, including when we're taking on major capital projects. Some months might contain big lump sum payments to contractor while some months don't.
As long as you notated C six, five, and seven as no votes, the rest fall into place.
There a motion?
Need a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move that the council and the council sitting in its various capacities take action in accordance with the recommendations set out on the agenda, noting that we have several declarations of no votes on a few items.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Councilmember Gomez voting no on item five, six, and seven. All pass.
Are we okay with that? Are we okay with that?
Yes, thank you.
All right, now we move on to written communications. Records retention schedules. Recommendation is that the city council and board of directors adopt resolution number nineteen dash zero seven nine in the records retention schedules. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of staff at this time? Three-minute time limit. Ms. Gomez, do you have anything?
Yes, for item D twelve, records retention schedules, there's three different resolutions. Resolutions nineteen dash zero nine seven, resolution number nine dash one zero one, and resolution nineteen dash zero seven nine, record retention schedules. My question here is, there's three resolutions that are addressing different pieces to the record destructions by administrative affairs. Seems too generous without it first coming to account, so to see the power that the administrative team currently has possessed and it's using this for its document, and I'm going to call it destruction. That's how I'm looking at this item. Will council be getting a list of each council meeting or at each council meeting before or after the destruction of current records that are assessed? Or are we cross-referencing them with a list that was provided in not too long distant of a meeting?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, I'm slow in responding only because I'm trying to make sure I'm putting my finger on the three resolutions. I'm finding two. Can you recite the three resolutions, Councilmember Gomez?
Yes, so I annotated nineteen dash zero nine seven, oh, zero nine seven, one oh one, and oh seven nine. Maybe it's juxtaposed, right? Is that what we're looking at?
Okay, so I see two resolutions and the resolution that is up for adoption is resolution nineteen zero seven nine. The resolution zero nine dash one zero one that you're referencing, it's actually called out and the resolution is being rescinded and some of the discussion, starting on page one fifty-three, actually speaks to the history as to when we last dealt with updating our records retention schedule. And my understanding from this staff report is that it's resolution zero nine dash one zero one that was approved back in December of two thousand nine. That was the last time we actually had dealt with our records retention policy. And so effectively what we've done since then, and notwithstanding the action you took about two months ago to actually destroy a number of records per that then, or current resolution and policy, we've been working with a consultant, a consultant that's known in the industry to advise municipalities on best practices and we've brought that consultant firm in to work with us, to work with our departments. And with that, they've looked at our old policy and certainly is recommending a newer policy with the basic goal of trying to make our process more efficient and effective. So what you have here is the byproduct of those professional recommendations that I understand are also similar recommendations given to other public agencies, over two hundred throughout the state of California, that are becoming the best practices for cities in terms of managing their records and not unduly burdening the organization with unnecessary storage, unnecessary spending of human resources for the retrieval of documents that really are not, that are determined not necessary.
And I think just a point of clarification, there is a, I think it's a typo on item twelve on the agenda because it does reference resolution nineteen zero nine seven. I think the numbers are transposed. The staff report makes it clear that it's actually resolution nineteen zero seven nine, not nine seven. That's why it looked like there were three resolutions. It's only one resolution and then a reference to the resolution being rescinded. That typo is just on the index.
Okay. Twelve, yeah, so even on our index agenda, it does show the three of them. So if they're juxtaposed, thank you for that clarification in terms of them not being three, but two. My other question is, when did we have an RFQ or an RFP in terms of the city council adopting the consultant to come in? I mean, I don't recall doing that and if we did, what was that date? Or was it under your purview as a city manager, under fifty thousand?
I believe it was done under my authority, not requiring it to come to the city council. So it's a contract that likely was less than fifty thousand dollars as far as the process that we followed. I couldn't speak to it specifically. Perhaps the city clerk can, but I do know as much as that we follow the city's purchasing rules when it comes to professional services like this.
Yeah, and that was my next question and I'm still going to go ahead and ask it. So if we contracted someone within the purchasing clauses that contract privatization of these processes, but under your rulership, I'm going to call it rulership, there's fifty thousand that you can pre-approve beforehand, why didn't you have also the authority of not bringing this to city council and just have the destruction of these documents without us?
The current policy, which is the one that we referenced and last adopted in two thousand nine, prescribes that they come to the city council for approval before the destruction. So that's why in the meeting that we had two months ago, I believe it was, is why in that fashion, we brought those documents back for your consideration to destroy.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Anyone else?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do. Thank you. So with regard to bringing these matters before the council, you know, every time we need to destroy documents, I for one am in favor of having this controlled by strict policy. That way it's always a given that the process, the practice is objective. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I do not have any speaker cards. Therefore, I need a motion in a second.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move that the city council and board of directors adopt resolution nineteen dash zero seven nine and the records retention schedules.
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Yes, the CPRA or the California Public Records Requests vest the power of the people to mandate such public records for scrutiny. And so I encourage you to keep not only the council, but the administrative executive team by addressing requests and asking your public records manager, whether it's here through written request or oral request, which you would be granted within ten days, making sure it's within the confines. You can email Lorraine Stevens and her email is L-Stevens with an S@victorvilleCA.gov. You can request on an enrolling basis, any consideration of the records that will be destroyed or that the city anticipates or actually submits to destroying. This keeps us accountable because if you don't, then who will? It takes a team. One person cannot not accomplish this by themselves.
Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no.
Item thirteen, possible cancellation of the regular city council meeting scheduled for Tuesday, January the seventh, two thousand twenty. The recommendation is that any action is at the discretion of the city council. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of staff regarding this?
Yes, so it's typical if we have one day before and this festivities, the next day, we don't have staff to work on anything and that's been standard protocol and I understand that. But January seventh after January first doesn't seem to be that regard. The actual discussion here, I think, is not that they don't have time because they're not here, but they don't have enough time. Is that correct? because they're not here, but they don't have enough time, is that correct?
No, I wouldn't exactly characterize it that way. I'm looking at my calendar right here. I think just plainly, staff is not available due to City Hall being closed. So if we were to try to have a meeting on the 7th, which certainly you have it within your prerogative to decide that, I will tell you, we don't have any real items to put on that agenda. Certainly, we can host public comment. But if we were to try to have a meeting on the 7th, typically, the way our agenda process works, items would have to be in on the 31st, which of course is a day that City Hall is closed. Likely, staff is working on those leading up to the 31st, dating back to the 26th of December, all of which days City Hall is closed, employees will not be here. So effectively, if we were to try to accommodate an actual agenda for January 7th, our typical posting would be on the afternoon of the 2nd, which is actually the first day we get back. So that being said, I just don't think realistically, even if there was a desire by the council that we would have time to actually put items on the agenda. But that being said, it is a regularly scheduled meeting date. Certainly, if you're so inclined, we can have a very limited agenda that includes just having public comment.
So one, you said that we wouldn't have enough items. What is that magic number of not being enough?
I don't have any at this point.
Okay, so zero. And then in terms of time allotment, how much processing time does staff need to put something together if there are nothing, right? You just probably answered my question, but if there is, if there is nothing, but I'm going to presume there has to be at least one, we have so many departments, and I'm sure we're always operating. What would be the time allotment in that regard?
I'm not sure, I'm sorry, I really don't understand that question. How much time would it take to prepare an agenda that has no items on it?
Well, I mean, of course, that doesn't, that says no time, right? But I'm going to presume that there is no way that any of our departments has nothing to say. So just based on prior trends, how long does it take staff to put something together that's just minimal because of festivities?
Well, even if it was minimal, our standard process starts typically the Tuesday. That's when the draft amongst leadership is first required to be turned in. And that's the first opportunity for me and the executive team to start reviewing it before our traditional Wednesday morning leadership meeting to review the entire agenda together. So it starts at least a week in advance, big or small, no matter the size of the agenda.
Yeah, no further questions.
Anyone else?
Yes, Madam Mayor. So on this, I would imagine that it would depend on what the item would be. I mean, some items require much more analysis and investigation than others. Would that be correct?
That is correct.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor.
I would say that I would favor the cancellation due to the fact that the staff is required to do so much of the work itself that the agenda itself would not be complete if we did not cancel because of the lack of time. It is better to have a complete agenda than to have one incomplete and not have all the information available. Due to that fact, which is far more important than a meeting, I myself would agree that due to the lack of time and the amount of work that it takes to put the agenda together, that for us to have a good agenda to actually approve, that we would have to cancel due to the labor that is required.
I have another question. If we look at the calendar and we set a trend in terms of the first is typically landing on where festivities do come about, shouldn't this be something that's part of the policy so that we don't have to always vote on it? Or is this just something random that it happened to be that timing? So I just want to know if that's the case and how we would address it if we had that opportunity.
Every year, the timing is different. So right now, as we're doing today, and we've done it in the past, handling it on a case-by-case is probably the best way to do it. If the council so desires to address it in the form of a policy, we can certainly consider that. But right now, handling on a case-by-case seems to be working just fine.
So if Rita made that a motion, I'm willing to second that.
Well, let me continue on. I do not have any speaker cards at this time. Therefore, at this time, I do need a motion in a second.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that we, that the council cancel the regularly scheduled meeting for Tuesday, January 7th, 2020.
I'll second that. Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to item 14. Discussion and possible action regarding general reporting on the overall health of the trees on Green Tree Golf Course. And I believe this is an item requested by Ms. Jones.
And the record should reflect that Mr. Cox has left the dais and leaving the room.
Correct. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council adopt Resolution Number 19-098 and approve Amendment Number 1 to the agreement with West Coast Arborist, increasing the annual compensation not to exceed $232,406 for the additional tree services.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, I believe that this item here, we will front the monies, but then we will be reimbursed by Sierra Management?
That is correct. We were able to determine that actually relying on the existing relationship we have with West Coast Arborist actually yielded a better price for Sierra Golf. So therefore, yes, we will be bearing the expense and getting reimbursed from the golf course.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, did you want to continue?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So first of all, thank you to my colleagues for allowing this matter to be placed on the agenda. Briefly, on August 6th of this year, the City Council took action that we be presented with a general reporting on the overall health of the trees on the Green Tree Golf Course, together with recommendations to address potential safety issues as well as the future care of our trees on the Green Tree Golf Course. This evening, we do have before us the requested report as well as recommendations. So Madam Mayor, I'll hand this item back to you. And once so invited, I'm prepared to make a motion for the council's consideration.
Are there any questions of staff at this time?
Yeah, so I noticed that Mr. Cox recused himself. Just because it says Green Tree, I don't think he just leaves. So I'm looking for a legal coding in terms of why he should leave. I mean, if I live on the green course, but I'm 200 feet or a million feet away, but it's still within the confines of the Green Tree, then I can be exempt.
The Fair Practices, the Fair Political Practices Commission in the state of California sets up rules and guidelines as to what they believe to be conflicts of interest. Mr. Cox has a residence on the golf course. That's clearly within the parameters set by the FPPC that would deem him to have a conflict. Conflict is based on the potential of doing any work at the Green Tree could either increase or decrease the value of his property. It's a little bit of a stretch from the analysis standpoint, but nevertheless, he falls within the guidelines prescribed by the FPPC. And therefore, to err on the side of caution, it's best that he recuse himself.
Okay, so I'm going to presume, because I visited, that there was a tree literally probably 50 feet, or you know, 60, I'm sorry, it's too, too far. So FPPC ruling says within 600 feet, is that what you're addressing in terms of?
It's essentially 500 feet from the golf course. Where the trees are is somewhat irrelevant. It's just the proximity of his property to the golf course, and he is immediately adjacent to the golf course.
And is there a reason why we don't have a picture here of how that conflicts with this? Or is that too much of a private confidentiality for the public to know?
It's up to the individual member to determine whether or not they have conflicts. Mr. Cox has property immediately on the golf course or adjacent to the golf course. Therefore, it's clearly within the parameters of the FPPC, and it's up to him to recuse himself.
And then why would Sierra Golf reimburse what we subsidize 100% through our general funds with contracts?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, the Sierra Golf is maintaining a fund that was actually given to the golf course resultant from it having participated in the MWA Cash for Grass program. So many years ago, when we undertook the turf removal in response to the drought regulations that were facing all of us in California, MWA at that time, I don't know that necessarily they still have the program, but effectively, they were encouraging people to curtail watering landscaping. So the golf course was successful in applying for those funds, and they've been maintained by the management of the golf course. So effectively, that's the funding source being used to reimburse the city's direct expenditure towards the trees. And if I said that wrong, please correct me, Janelle, but I think I got it right. Thanks.
If they have a fund, meaning the Sierra, why does the city have to foot the bill already, I already asked that. But when is Sierra going to pay? So we have to, is this like an interloan? Because we're paying, but they're refunding. Is there any time period lapse where we're going to have any kinds of fees associated with it? Meaning fees, when I say it's interest, that the taxpayers have to pay on top of that. It just, the way we're catering to a narrative, it just doesn't sound too transparent to my ears, and it kind of causes me a little bit of trouble because I don't see that happening. We're paying for it, but they're paying for it, but we subsidize the bill. It's like, it's still coming from my pocket.
Not an interfund, there's no loan relationship here. It's just a direct reimbursement arrangement between us and them involving a fund that they're managing and administering on our behalf that has cash available to spend.
In the city of Victorville, that's the only area that has trees that we can subsidize?
I'm sorry, can you restate that?
In the city of Victorville, that's the only area that the city has to subsidize? Monies for the wiring of trees?
Well, we water trees at all of our parks. I think we have 17 or 18 parks throughout the city, 19, I'm sorry, okay. 19 parks throughout the city that all have tree maintenance as a responsibility. So not just Green Tree Golf Course as one park. All the parks have tree management maintenance components to them.
I'm going to presume that all of the 22 parks came like this, and we had to say yes because this is only one of 23 parks. It should have already been included if that was the case, shouldn't it have?
No, I mean, the 19 parks that we administer, golf course being included, they're all in different conditions, different states have different issues. This issue, I think, largely is grown as a direct result from having responded to the state's mandate to curtail our watering for landscaping purposes. And while it was believed to be a good deed to cut back the turf and reduce our watering, we were successful in that regard. But an honest byproduct from that, that I think wasn't anticipated, was the negative effect to the trees that were equally depending upon the same water that was watering the grass at the golf course that was effectively removed.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, there's 313 trees, and 157 are going to be removed by the fact of the trimming, therefore saving water and saving those that are there. My question is, are you replacing the 157 trees that are being removed with new trees? Or is this a situation where it's going to remain as is? I can understand the trimming, but my question is, once you remove the trees, the 157, what are you going to do in replacement?
Sure, so the staff report talks about possibly less than 10 trees that would have to be replaced because it will maintain protecting the homes around the course and the integrity of the course itself. Other than that, we are pursuing some potential adoptions of Joshua trees. And that would be ideal because it is a native species and requires minimal maintenance and water. So that is one potential option. If we find the need to replace additional trees, we could also look at the Afghan pine tree, which has done very well on the golf course.
So is there any consideration of the expense in terms of replacement? Has, is there a plan in the future to replace these 157 trees?
With the Joshua tree adoptions, that's something that our park staff can address. So there's little to no cost because you're adopting the tree. If we had to purchase a few of the Afghan pine trees, then there would be a cost. But that's something that we build into our budget to have to replace a certain number of trees each year. So we could cover that for this particular project.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I?
Does she still have time?
I haven't asked any questions.
No, you still have time.
I just think this is the first I've asked questions, all right. So approximately 147 trees, we're looking at potentially being replaced in the future, some Joshua trees and maybe some with others. When we get to that point, is it possible for the council to hear that? Because I know that there's always consideration given to the aesthetics of our parks. And I know that this area was, at least by the looks of it, was originally meant to be a little lecher kind of thing. And I know that we can't always have that in the high desert. But I'd sure would think that a lot of the people in that area would not be so inclined to have 147 new Joshua trees because what was lost was certainly lecher than that. Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Janelle. I do not have any speaker cards. Therefore, I'm requesting a motion in a second.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the council take action in accordance with the recommendation set out on the agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Yes, because this money appropriations do not leave the least disadvantaged in our city in a better position as they currently are with this fiscal decision. We don't, we did not adopt the integrity of our least advantaged. And as a matter of fact, the decision of this council was to let the trees die and then place turf and dirt, which could have been a possible solution without affecting the decision. And in terms of what we did prior to that, if you look at the center of the island on Green Tree, we decided that those trees needed to be allowed to die. And there was $50,000 to some type of grant that allowed for that to happen, and it didn't come from our funding. And because this type of alignment does not align with the principles of justice that I ascribe to with what is good and what is moral, moral will and the ideals, I cannot in good consciousness vote for this item.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes with Councilmember Gomez voting no and Councilmember Cox being absent.
Now we move on to item 15. Resolution of the Board of Directors regarding the administration of delinquent customer accounts and establishment of policies for the shut-off of water. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Victorville Water District Board of Directors adopt Resolution Number VWD-19-010 to establish procedures for the administration of delinquent customer accounts and policies for the shut-off of water for non-payment of past due amounts.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions of staff, three-minute time limit? Ms. Jones, do you have any questions?
I have none, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes, so we just talked about something, we talked about the impacts and the corrosion, and I'm associating that with the water connections. To me, the former item that I had, I think it's Mr. Gangler came up to speak upon to answer the inquiries, seems so diff, it's you, I think, yeah, no, Doug Matthews was here answering questions for me. So I'm looking at this item, and in my eyes, it almost seems like the same thing. But I know they can't be the same thing because they're two different items with the shut-off policies. So can you clarify that? To me, they're like verbatim same things.
Which item you referring to, the one tonight?
The, there's a former item that I was questioning in terms of water. Maybe when we talk about Maybe when we talk about sewer and freshwater, really?
Sure. So, so that was just fines for illegal connections. This is not, these are our residential customers and, and there's a, a bill that was passed by the state senate and we have to change our policies and procedures regarding water shut-off to allow them additional time and some other things as well as far as alternative payment plans as outlined in the staff report.
Okay.
So, they're entirely different.
Okay, okay. So, my questions are, see, I saw this one particularly at a very negative light, like the former one, but it looks like it's shedding good light when you have California saying, put more extension, allow for, for people to pay for these shut-offs. And I had read it differently. I had read it that we're going to shut your water because you didn't pay. And I've had a lot of commercial sites coming in here in the service department and saying, you know what, I'm sorry, I can't pay. Can I do have a payment? And I don't understand why I should be the one to kind of mediate for them. And so, I figured that this item was going to put me more on the spot to mediate for something that I think the city should already be doing on their own behest and not have a council walk in with a commercial property owner or a business owner, because it's kind of detrimental. That's, I mean, I can help out, but I don't think I should be present as a coercive power of resentment for any staff member to abide by policies. So, with that said, then, I'm going to presume that this is something shedding good light. It's not, that's not what I had the interpretation of, but your conversation made me think it's something positive.
There's positive and negative to it, but it does allow additional time for residential customers if they, before they're shut off and if they qualify to have a payment plan, it could add even more time than that. So, it really doesn't impact commercial customers, but the policy does address that. But those, that policy is really not changing on the commercial side. But we do work with our customers.
And I, I have business customers, like restaurants, that are telling me that their water bill is connected to their trash bill. Is this going to facilitate more of that? So, they don't pay for their trash, but their water gets shut off. They don't like that.
It's all one bill. So, if you don't pay your bill, your water will get shut off.
So, that, there's no need for this to be addressing that. It would be an internal municipal affair and us to change that regulation in terms of how we operate. Right now, they're together. So, we can address as a bifurcated item, right?
Yeah.
This wouldn't address it.
It's not, it's not within this resolution or policy. So, we bill for all utility services except for gas and electric on one bill. And, and if you're delinquent on your bill, your water, that, that's how we handle it. The water will get shut off after a certain time period.
Thank you. No further questions.
Anyone else?
I have a question. I can't find it now. As I recall in reading this earlier, there was a comment in relation to low income and seniors.
That's actually the, probably the next item you're referring to. So, in our, there's something we're looking at in our water rate study.
Okay. I'll wait. I couldn't see why they were put together.
Yeah, that would be in the next item.
Okay. I do, thank you. I do not have any speaker cards. I need a motion and a second.
Move staff recommendation, Madam Mayor.
I'll second it.
Sorry.
I have a motion by, made by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item number sixteen. Approval of Agreement with NBS for Water Rate Study Update. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Victorville Water District Board of Directors Approve the Consultant Professional Services Agreement, Provider Agreement with NBS for a Water Rate Study Update in an amount not to exceed sixty-two thousand ten dollars and authorize the city attorney to approve non-substantive revisions to the agreement.
Thank you. Any questions from staff? I mean, council members of staff?
Yes.
Go ahead, Janelle.
On page three forty-seven. Evaluate Low Income and Senior Discount Program. I am, I'm not opposed to senior discounts or veterans' discounts or junior discounts. Why is it there?
It's there just to look at the possibility, but it would go to the council for, you know, if we were to implement a program. So, a lot of utilities have low income and senior rates. It's just something we're exploring is all.
That was the next question. Do, does gas and electric have come rates for seniors? Not that I know of.
It's, I'm not sure which ones do, but they're out there. I, I don't have the exact ones, but...
Okay. I just, I don't know why we have some seniors that have a lot of money in us.
They would have to...
For living so long, but I don't know why we're to give them a discount.
Yeah, it would be income-based. It would be, yeah.
So, it's income-based, period.
For those classes, right.
Yes, gas and electric, yes.
Anyone else?
Yes. And I'm going to need clarification again. We have very similar items, but they're piecemealed. So, here, when we're talking about, I, I'm just going to assume that it's the consultation, I mean, the consultant, but it's not RFQ. It doesn't look like an RFQ to me. We just did a, a rate schedule, but with the language, I don't think it's necessarily the rate schedule that we're doing because it's going to increment for the next five years. We just passed and we had a presentation, but this rings so much closeness to a rate schedule happening. And then, it reminds me of our sewer system with these CCTVs and then I'm coming up with Q, R cubed because of the Water Master Plan. So, can you help me understand? Because right now, they're just murky together.
So, the, the last one we did were the trash and the sewer rate studies, solid waste and sewer. This is, water rate study, as it's identified in the staff report, was done three or four years ago. We're in the fourth year of a five-year rate plan, so it's time to look at them again to make sure we're, we're able to keep up. So, the reason for this is to go out and look at our rates for the next five years.
But I thought we just did that not even a year ago.
Not for the water. Water was done 2014.
I think you're thinking of sewer, which was done earlier this year. Very similar concepts, very similarly natured, and in fact, you had the same firm working with us. So, maybe even the, the proposal that you're looking at, the letterhead and all that, maybe for that reason, it looks similar. But earlier this year, we did sewer, which includes wastewater. Different from potable water. This item before you is, is dealing specifically with the potable or drinking water.
Okay. So, then, I have a lot of consumers that come up to me and they complain about their water rates. So, I'm going to presume that when they complain about their water rates and we're doing is, we did the sewer increase of the fee and they disagree. And now, we're going to do again the water survey to continue to see how it's going to fluctuate in terms of having a base for money. I mean, how do you market to the individuals? If I am this confused as a council member and I can ask the questions directly to you, they're coming to me and saying, why are my rates keep going up? And I'm thinking, well, yeah, we just approved, well, I didn't, approved a fee and here we are doing another one. It almost seems like it's back-to-back, but you've clarified it's one sewer and one's potable water. But again, I'm confused as water is water, whether it's dirty or not, you cleanse it, right? You're still going to drink it from toilet to tap. So, that's what I'm thinking. So, how are we marketing for individuals that can't seem to find that, the case? I'm confused.
Well, I think we try to communicate it as a individual system responsibility. So, you have a domestic water or drinking water system, which is what we're dealing with here. And when we're dealing with sewer, we're dealing with a sewer system which contains pipe, it conveys dirty water, also includes treatment components to it. Also, unrelated to water, but similar concept, we also, earlier this year, approved rates for solid waste. And effectively, you have to look at that as an individual system dealing with the collection and eventual disposal of solid waste, trash. So, it, it's not perfect in the sense that we're not able to do them all at once, but each system has their own individual cost of service. And effectively, what these studies do is establish as a rate program for all of the different rate classes, customer classes, I should say, and, and tries to build equity amongst all different types of customers to satisfy the needs of the system in terms of generating revenue to cover not only the operating expenditure of those individual systems, but also to satisfy the master plant capital needs to keep the system functioning and keep it with longevity.
And then, my last question then is, is it common standard that we're using, we're doing workshops one time before we do it into a written or a hearing, a public hearing? This is not a public hearing, this is written communication? Or this is just preliminary to the two eighteen where people can come and vote and say no?
This, this is just a study. So, that would lead to, if we had a, a rate schedule that had some increases, we would go through the Prop two eighteen process. So, this is merely a study. There will be council workshops to go over recommendations of the study and, you know, that's all forthcoming. This is just merely a study.
So, this is the first phase and then people are going to come up and either say yea or nay in a public hearing in terms of our fee schedule?
They'll have the opportunity to weigh in if we do decide to increase rates. They won't say yea or nay if this study's correct. This is just a study to determine costs.
What we'll typically do before even getting to that point of actually voting for the approval of rates is we'll actually have workshops with, with the council. It's a very complicated, though thorough, study. There's a lot of information in it and I can remember back in 2016, it might have been a course of a year where we've actually had multiple workshops. But we would actually have a workshop with the council, obviously to share with you the, the recommendations. And, and there likely will be a, a number of recommendations that the council will be looked upon to weigh in, to offer guidance as to how to start proceeding then with the public noticing that would then be precursor to the actual rate adoptions if there are new rates being proposed for adoption.
Thank you.
Question. This is going to be a rate study for the user. Is it going to touch on development fees for the system and system costs for new development?
No, no.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. So, for purposes of clarification, absolutely, this is just the, the process of conducting a study. And the reason we do that is to, is in actuality to determine what the cost of service is, correct? Municipalities don't and in fact, are prohibited from making this a profit-making venture by raising rates, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I believe those are all the questions. Thank you. I do not have any speaker cards. Therefore, I need a motion and a second.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move staff's recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item seventeen. Green Tree Boulevard Extension Project Purchase and Sale Agreement for Lee Graham. City Clerk, Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
That the city council approve the purchase and sale agreement with Lee Graham regarding Assessor Parcel Number thirty-ninety-three-three-one-zero-seven for a total compensation of twenty-thousand-seven-hundred dollars for the required right-of-way for the Green Tree Extension Project for twelve-hundred-forty-eight square feet of fee property and forty-two-sixty-five square feet of temporary construction easements. Authorize the city attorney to make substantive revisions to the agreement and authorize the mayor and staff to execute the agreement.
That should be non-substantive.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, I don't understand when the city clerk stated what she stated, why the attorney said what he said. Would you clarify that?
City clerk, I think mistakenly said substantive changes, which means I would have the ability to change the substance of the agreement. I don't have that ability. Basically, the resolution requests that I have the ability to make non-substantive changes, meaning just clean-up items that don't, do not change in any way the subject matter of the agreement.
I didn't read the word "non."
Okay, thank you for that clarification. In terms of, and this is another one, we get so many that say Green Tree Extension Project. I remember through closed session and coming out here, we were talking about twenty, twenty-one different properties. And perhaps that's so distinct from here as an easement. So, in my mind, I'm bringing them apart, but I'm bringing them together because we talk about these types of, these types of issues in and out. And it's like, well, which, which one does it belong to? So, I'm going to say it's separate, but I need a confirmation if that's the case. Because if it was twenty-one and it dwiddled down and now we have Lee Graham and that was the last of the property that we needed to look for, then I, I would need clarification for that.
This is the last purchase and sale agreement that needs to be approved for the project? So, all the other ones have been approved prior? So, this is the last property that we need?
So, this was the last of, of twenty-one of them? That, that's the number that sticks in my head if it's pertinent to this item.
The staff report identifies on page four-ten, twenty parcels.
Correct.
Then, that's different. All right. Until I get more questions, I'm going to go ahead and yield my time.
Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, so, we're always doing price matching. It's not, it's not the technical term, but you would understand what we're looking at. We're going to give a certain percentage and the other percentage is going to come about. You've said this in the past, but because it wasn't clear if it was twenty-one or the twenty, which he corrected, I need clarification on that.
I'm not sure I understand your question.
So, we're always talking about, and I call it again, price matching, which is not the technical term. So, we're, we have to foot the bill, but we have, we can't do it by ourselves, so it's not one hundred percent of our costs. So, there's other monies coming in as well. And I think you've said this in the past, but I don't know if it's fifty-one percent of it. And even, I see forty-nine here, but I'm, are we taking the brunt of it mostly? Because Apple Valley supposedly already did their side, they're waiting on us for the last twenty years.
So, as far as the project funding for the whole project, we're responsible for forty-nine percent of the project costs. The other fifty-one percent are, they'll be funded through SBCTA, the San Bernardino Transportation Authority and San Bernardino County Transportation Authority. There are, we do have an agreement with Apple Valley and also the County of San Bernardino for cautionary. A portion of the project, the eastern part of the project is in the County of San Bernardino, so they'll, they'll be contributing some of the cost. And then, we have an agreement with Apple Valley for a share of the project, which would be, it's essentially an in lieu contribution that was assigned to the La Mesa-Nesqually interchange. And we had an agreement with them and that, it's roughly four million dollars. That funding would go towards this project.
So, the last part, I'm just, what I understand is like, like we bartered instead of doing monetary exchange, it was like a switch-off of some sort?
Well, in, in the SBCTA Nexus Study, there were fair share project costs for the La Mesa-Nesqually interchange. And Apple Valley had a, a certain responsibility for that project. But we have an agreement with Apple Valley, instead of them funding part of the La Mesa-Nesqually interchange, they're funding this project. And that's all in accordance with the SBCTA fair shares for those projects. So, there wasn't, it wasn't negotiated, it was already set in a study. And we previously, Victorville and Apple Valley agreed to that.
Is this a CIP project?
Excuse me?
Is this a CIP project then? A capital improvement project?
This is a capital improvement project, yes.
And then, for the, for the attorney, in terms of Green Tree, I see the word Green Tree and I think about Mr. Cox's recusal, but I know he's not recusing. Could you explain that for me?
Certainly, his property is nowhere near this project. This project is east of Hisperia Road and his property is nowhere close to this project.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
I think those were all the questions we had. Thank you. I do not have any speaker cards. I need a motion and a second.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the city council take action in accordance with the recommendations set out on the agenda.
I'll second. I have a motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries with Councilmember Cox voting no.
Item number eighteen. Part-Time Employee Table of Compensation. Item number eighteen, Part-Time Employee Table of Compensation. This recommendation is that the city council adopt Resolution Number 19-097, approving the part-time employee table of compensation with a three-year phased implementation plan. So at this time, council members, do you have any questions of staff?
Yes.
Okay, you're going to have to clarify this for me again. So this is pertinent to those furlough days, right, where we're giving, we went, right? I mean, you frowned, but I'm telling you, this is not clear for me when I'm reading some of these items. It says, "Part-Time Employees Table of Compensation." Not focusing on the word "part-time," I'm just focusing on compensation of employees. So we just voted not too long ago on something of this nature. And we discussed administrative, executive administration, how they, in a year, would enter into the budget and also have an increase. So that's what I'm thinking it has to do with this. But you can totally tell me, no, it's part-timers and this is why.
Madam Mayor, city council, this absolutely has nothing to do with the furlough that was, that was provided, or getting off of the furlough and adding, going back to a forty-hour week that was provided to the full-time employees. This is specifically the adjustments needed to be made to the part-time salary schedule to make sure that as the, the minimum wage rates are scheduled to go up in the state of California over the next, looks like, three remaining years, that the, we, one, adopt a schedule that, that is compliant with those minimum wage increases, but we are also applying the hourly rate schedule for those positions that are slightly above minimum wage to make sure that the, that there is no compaction that, that is created with the increase at the, of the minimum wage at those lower levels. And so this is the, the staff responsibly, one, being in compliance with the state minimum wage, but making sure that the, all of our part-time staff receive a similar benefit as, so that the minimum wage doesn't run over those, those other positions that are not exactly set at minimum wage. So hopefully that answers the question. The, the cost estimates for these increases have been included in your staff report. The effective date of the minimum wage increase is January first, which is why it's, it was imperative that it be taken at this particular council prior to the first of the year. And then the subsequent raises will be effective at each January first as prescribed in the schedule listed on page 432.
So what is the current rate of our part-timers average?
There's a reference table on page 433 in your staff report. There's a table of compensation that's listed there, where on the, on the left, it lists the, all of the part-time positions that we have in the city. The hourly rate, the current hourly rate is listed there in the third column. And then what's being proposed in each of the subsequent years is listed in each column there to the right.
Okay, so the current hourly rate for an aquatic aid is $12. It's proposed to be by 2020, a dollar extra, right?
That's correct, as prescribed by the minimum wage.
And then I look at page 432, the effective date of minimum wage is 10.50 an hour?
The effective rate back in January 2017 was 10.50 an hour. And then subsequently, in 2018, it was 11, 2019, it was 12. And with the expectation by the state to bring everybody up to $15 an hour by January 2022.
Why didn't the city council address this when we were addressing furlough days?
The city had always applied those minimum hour rates for the minimum wage. It's, at this point in this year, as the expectation is to go to $13 an hour, if you go back to page 33, you'll see by raising those, those lower level positions up to $13 an hour, that the level of compaction it creates with those positions above it. And so this year, we're acknowledging that if we're going to raise the bottom of the floor, that we probably should have some increases applied to the other part-time positions as well.
So, and this is probably more of a comment, but it can turn into a question. If you look at the, the theory of utilitarianism, the classic, are they average, is supposed to better the majority? However, when you apply the difference rule, when you benefit the majority and the debasement of the least advantaged is not benefited, those principles of justice are not applied to them. And when I look at something like before, not here, because now you're going to, we're going to be abiding, I'm presuming by state law, not that the city council and the city administration even wanted to increase this. And please, don't read me wrong, I was one of the proponents, I was fighting to get part-timers to get an increase in wage and it didn't happen. So I, I'm just baffled at why we waited till now?
Well, Madam Mayor and Council, I, I do want to make this point of clarification. So at the time, so let's just look at the years prior to the coming off of the furlough. When the city were to apply a COLA adjustment to all the employees, the part-timers were included in that COLA adjustment. So as the full-time employees received an increase in, in a COLA adjustment, those part-time employees did receive the same adjustment to their hourly rates. As we then fast forward to the adoption of the budget this year, which included moving folks from the 36-hour work week to the 40-hour work week, the only adjustment that was made for the full-time employees was the addition of those four hours with no adjustment to their base rate. And so as you apply that type of language to the part-timers, their, their number of hours that they work will fluctuate each week. And so there was no hourly rate increase required to provide to the part-timers as there was no hourly rate adjustment provided to the full-timers. It was just the movement from 36 hours a week, work week, to a 40-hour week work week. Any increases that was received by the full-timers prior to that were COLA adjustments and the part-timers received those increases as well.
Okay, and I'll save it for the comment to make a comment on what you stated. No further questions?
Anyone else?
Yes, I would like to know, looking at the chart, I see that the library aide, the recreation specialist, the pool manager, the library clerk, the office aide, and the library technician. Looking at the rate and to the proposed, one is six cents, 53 cents, 12 cents, 25 cents, 24 cents, and one remains the same. My question is, why? I, you're saying that we're proposing a rate for adjunct or part-time, whatever you prefer to call them? And yet, these individuals are almost not even making a dollar more. Can you tell me how you determine the so-called current to the proposed when, in many cases, as the first one that I mentioned, was only a six cents increase?
There was an element of looking at, well, no different than we look at all of the salaries in the city. We, we attempt to try to be competitive and remain competitive. As we looked at the increased rates for the minimum wage at the lower end of the table, in, in your view, it's at the top in, the top of the table, you see, those are some increases that we have to do by law, right? The, as the middle of the table represents those positions that hadn't, had we not had the minimum wage increases, there would have been an adequate amount of difference between what those folks were making versus those that are making the minimum wage. But what, with, in play, when you put the minimum wage in place, that, it creates a bit of compaction, right? So the positions that you listed, starting with the library clerk on down, those are all positions that were separated enough from the minimum wage to where it's not, the compaction is not so much the issue. There, we're looking at remaining competitive. And so we actually took a look at those hourly rates and we, we're recommending some increases, but we're recommending increases that continue to make us competitive in that, in those areas without, without necessarily having the same significant increases as we see on the lower end positions, like the minimum wage level positions.
Well, I hate to tell you, but it doesn't fly. I, I don't understand it. Because when you're saying from the current to the proposed and you're giving a person a six cents per hour, that's 48 cents a day extra. Oh, let's make it 50 cents. Okay, so 50 times seven, $3.50, they're making more. In taxes, they probably don't even get the $3. My question is, what is your criteria that you can give someone? Take for example, in the, the first one that was listed, aquatic aide, that's an aide. They're going from $12 to $13. They're making $1 more. Well, $1 more is $8 for the day, eight times five is $40. So they're making $40 compared to another aide who's making $3.50. I'm just questioning you on the criteria, how do you determine that one versus the other, both working part-time, are, one is getting 94 cents less? I, I don't understand. I, I find this unacceptable. I mean, I can't understand how you can determine that. So you need to prove to me why one is better than the other? Is it because of education? Is it because of time? Is it because of seniority? What is it?
Madam Mayor, should I have time to answer? Okay. The, the requirement of the positions at the lower end level are by law. The law is requiring that we make those crease, increases by, for the $1. As we actually look and move up the table, that, that we are, those positions are so significantly higher than the minimum wage, it becomes more of a competitive nature. Are we remaining competitive for those positions to be able to attract people into and hire people in those positions? And so the, the intent here was to not flow that same $1, that $1 per hour increase along all of those positions, because there really isn't the, there's no political requirement to do that for every single one of those positions. But we did want to make sure that we are remaining competitive. And so when you compare somebody who's making $12 an hour minimum wage to somebody who's making nearly 20, 23, $24 an hour on their hourly position, those are two different levels of skill. Your minimum entry level folks are, are not bringing, I mean, aquatic aides, I'd like to believe that they know how to swim and they're good lifeguards. But the folks that we have in those higher level positions, we, we do expect that we're paying them, I believe, pretty competitively now. We just wanted to make sure that they, we didn't lose that competitive edge into the next four years. It's just so happened that we used this opportunity to compile all the part-time positions to the one study and have the council review and, and consider the hourly rates for all the part-time positions, because they're not included in the annual resolution that we take for the full-time employees.
George, also, it's, it's a state mandate. The minimum actually goes up to $12. However, if they have over 26 employees, which the city has way over that, it jumps to 13. So there may be a little confusion there also, because a lot of businesses will be paying the $12, not the 13.
Right.
So maybe we need to clear that up.
Yeah, no, so to acknowledge and bring some clarity what the mayor is suggesting, if you look at the proposed rate in 2020, we do meet the minimum employee threshold to, to implement the $13 an hour rate. You will see, you may see some smaller businesses, as the mayor's suggesting in the, in the city, who have less than that number of employees as the basis that are only applying a $12 rate. So we are subject to the higher one. I think the, the impetus is that if we can afford to pay the higher one because we have that many employees, then we should be paying the $13.
Statement dated.
Madam Mayor, may I? Thank you very much. All right, so, well, first of all, I appreciate the staff going above and beyond and taking a look at the full of the salary schedule to make sure that we're remaining competitive because it wasn't a requirement. But, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's Basic Business 101. It's a good business practice to make sure that we're good and competitive in the employment marketplace, is that correct? Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, I do, thank you, Madam. Do you do a survey, a salary survey of the part-time workers? Or do you establish? I know some surveys, you establish certain classifications and then the difference on the higher or lower salary depends upon the difference in the qualifications rather than the actual survey. So that you keep them so much, a percentage apart. When one goes up, then the other ones go up. Other salary surveys based upon actual pay. But part-time looks like would be awfully difficult to do. And I was just wondering how you arrived at these to begin with?
Yeah, and looking at part-time salaries is not an exact science, because it doesn't necessarily have the same pool of examples out in the, in the market with other cities. You may have, for example, you may have a senior recreation leader that's making $14 an hour here, but over at Hisperia Park and Rec District, they call that role in the organization completely different, or they may not have that role at all. And so it's really hard to kind of match up from the part-time salary. What we wanted to do here is make sure, and, and the Community Services Department provided quite a bit of input to this. They actually, they looked at the volume of employees that they had at each one of these ranks and quite frankly, made most of the recommendations here. So I know that the attention to, to make, wanting to make sure that they remain competitive was, was key to that department, because this is, these are their employees. But ideally, what we're looking at is, yeah, we're, we're trying to stay competitive. We have a few competitors for, for talent in this particular region. And I want to say that we, we, we are presenting something to you today that will assure that we try to attempt to remain competitive. If in the next three years, we determine that that's changed, then I would imagine that we revisit the, the rates and bring them back to the council for further consideration.
Are some of the questions? Thank you, George. Okay, I do not have any speaker cards, therefore we need a motion in a second here.
Move staff recommendations?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments?
Yes, so a council member currently stated the following, "It's a good business practice to be up to par with the government." However, I'm looking at this and the city of Victorville can't vote something like this down when it's a state mandate, first of all. I know what Rita was saying is, how is this justified when you're giving 12 cents? It's not justifiable. It's almost like this, this administration has to abide by state law. However, this local municipality also has within its confines and the power to give something that would be considered, quote-unquote, "a livable wage" to our part-timers. A lot of our part-timers, there's a lot of turnaround. So they're being extracted from where they're at and we have the least amount in that, in that position. And a lot of these people are not necessarily bilingual and they're working in the lowest echelons of what it calls labor work, which is very strenuous. And another thing that I wanted to state with, Mr. Harris stated that the full-time employees were working 36 and they went to 40 hours. And it's my understanding, when I hear employees complain, whether it's the state or in the local city, the following, when you go from a 36 to a 40-hour week, work week, now you're able to get compensation with benefits. You may not have the fiat money, right? But when you're at 36 hours, you're not getting that full benefit. So in that, in that regard, I, I think that's why I wanted to see the part-timers and have a fair evaluation, rather than leaving it up to the state for them to make something justifiable for this, this entity to say, "Yeah, we're going to go with what the state is." So there's two things that I'm talking about right now. And, but to your point, we can do three votes and, you know, look at the part-timers, do an actual study and see something that it's fair, and then have this administration go ahead and say, "You know what, it's not fair to give them 12 cents as a part-timer. Maybe we can send it out to the voters like we did with our fire." And all that has solutions, but we would have to make a motion and then have three votes for that to occur.
So, Madam Mayor, I have a follow-up if I could, if I still have time left. Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. So just to be very clear, when I was speaking about good, good business practice, it was related to the second prong of what was done here, which relates to making sure that we're competitive in the mark, not, in the marketplace, not with regard to the state mandate. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And then I, I think I also have some time. I talked to a lot of these part-timers, you know, they're, a lot of them have been there for 20 years. Could you believe that? 20 years as a part-timer, slaving away to keep our parks beautiful and aesthetically pleasing. And to me, I was baffled to understand that, you know what, we're not giving them a chance and a 12-cent raise, but yet we're looking at everybody else like these people who are part-timers are not valuable for the city of Victorville? And I understand your full anger, Councilmember Mayor, I'm sorry, Ramirez.
Madam Mayor, if I may, there's a, there was a statement that was made that was fairly inaccurate. Madam Mayor, if I may, there was a statement that was made that was fairly inaccurate, specifically discussing the benefits that were awarded to the employees that were on furlough at thirty-six hours. They actually were receiving full-time benefits while working the thirty-six for furlough week. And the exchange for working that thirty-six-hour week versus forty-hour week was the four hours of pay. And so they were still treated as full-time employees, received all the full-time benefits as a full-time employee. The difference was only working a thirty-six-hour week, in which it was done at a time where the city needed to make some financial cutbacks. And in return, in exchange for the employees taking a cut in pay, they were also not required to work that forty-hour week and was scheduled to work thirty-six hours. What was recently decided at the time the budget was adopted was resorting back to the forty-hour work week, providing that four hours' worth of pay back to the employees and providing them the opportunity to work as a basis for forty hours rather than the thirty-six. But there was no change to the actual benefits associated with full-time employment when the change either went back from forty to thirty-six at the beginning of the furlough and when the forty-hours work week was reestablished.
Okay, just without disclosing any of the employees that actually contacted me on my personal cellphone, I want to let you know that that's not what I heard in terms of giving them the benefit of the, I call it salutation, but it's salud, your health. They were comparing to, like, let's say Food for Less, fathers getting more than what the city would give. So I just needed to clarify that because I'm not just talking out of my mouth. I'm actually receiving phone calls from actual city employees. So I have to advocate for what I'm hearing, but I understand where your point comes as well. But just as an advocate, I'm going to voice what I need to voice in the record. Thank you.
I have a motion made by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item number nineteen, Employee Personnel Matter, Final Appeal Hearing. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council delegate an independent neutral hearing officer to preside over an employee personnel matter to ensure that due process is afforded to the subject of the employee personnel matter.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions of staff at this time? Three-minute time limit.
Ms. Jones, do you have anything?
Just a question to clarify. The recommendation talks about delegating a neutral hearing officer, but when we look at the backup data, we talk about using a firm and there's a lag time in using a firm versus a local private attorney firm. Is staff looking for us to make such a distinction when a motion is put forward?
I don't believe that is necessary. I believe if you could delegate that decision-making to the city manager to see what's most economical and still keeping within the realms of due process for the benefit of the employee.
Okay, thank you. That's all, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Have any questions on this?
No, I believe that it would only be fair to go to an outside source. After all, everyone has the right of due process and they should be guaranteed the right of being able to receive a fair judgment. So I think this is a question that cannot be questioned at all or it should be accepted. Why? Because everyone has the right. Everyone should be treated fairly and with justice.
The very idea that this is on the agenda tells me that the city council needs to make a decision. And you're absolutely right. You know, the employees have every right to have a hearing and to have it unbiased in any way. If there's some question about employees handling it or the manager handling it or HR handling it, you would automatically go to an outside agency just to ensure that you have a fair and impartial hearing. And so it would seem like the city attorney is, I mean, the city council's decision is, "Do you want a local attorney who specializes in these items? Or do you want an organization such as JAMs or AMs to do it?" I think that's the only decision we have to be concerned with.
I agree too, then.
So, Madam Mayor, are we in the comment period now? Are we still asking questions?
Questions of staff?
Okay, so I'll wait, I'll hold my comments until they're invited. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, so I want a definition of what is economical and due process for an employee. Another thing is, I'm hearing from an elected body who has a fiduciary duty to render due process to its constituency, including whether it's the title of an employee or not, that perhaps there is no legitimacy in due process with any of these five council members here, which I'm going to challenge because as elected officials, we were faced with something of that nature to be unbiased and unpartisan. The other thing, which I would like a response, that's probably for legal counsel. The other question is, what tiers are these employees going through? So I heard Mr. Cox say there was certain processes, and it's my interpretation, perhaps first it was human resources, human resources made a determination. Then there perhaps there's an appeal. I don't know what that appeal is, if it's right here, right now. And then there's a recommendation from staff to send it to an outside external source that would perhaps qualify for due process. So I would like that step to be intermittently answered. The next question is, why would we choose an independent hearing officer? You can give me your opinions, whether they have basis for them or not with legal, any kind of legal standing. I would like to hear that. And why can't we hear it as a council? What is the opinion of staff making that recommendation to go externally? What department was this? What's the title? And if for any reason it's not disclosable, what are the legal reasons for that not being disclosable? And I said title. I said department. I didn't ask for the person's name. And the hearing officer, what is it that city council cannot administer with that? And what does it mean that the city council for review and certification? This decision will be provided by the city council for review and certification. It's presuming that it went outside and we're going to do something called review and recertification or certification? I don't understand that. Finally, for the costs, how much is the cost? If it comes to council, how much are we expending on listening to something like this to provide due process versus an external entity? Why a local attorney? I mean, these are questions that are not answered within the confines of the affording of full due process.
Let me try and address that. Anytime there's a termination per the city's personnel rules, there's essentially three steps that that employee has in terms of going through a hearing process. There's what's called a Skelly hearing initially, where issues are brought up as to the reasons why that individual's ain't given an opportunity to present his case. After that, there is then a hearing officer that hears the, essentially what is a mini appeal of that. And then this would be the third step, where that decision then can be appealed to the city council as a body or the city council can delegate a third party. The fact that the first two hearings have been with city personnel involved makes it even more appropriate to go outside because you may have talked to some other people involved in the process, you may not have, we don't know that. But to give, or to allow an independent person to hear the third appeal protects you from that potential of any possible bias. I'm not saying there is a bias. Certainly, you could hear, what it essentially is at this point is a mini trial. And so you, as the body, would either be conducting the mini trial or somebody that has experience in this type of activity would be providing that little mini trial. They'd hear the evidence, or you could hear the evidence, and then they would come and render a decision. If we go to a third-party independent entity, we believe it provides far more due process. It avoids any appearance of bias. We don't know procedurally if the employee has talked to any of the council members, has talked to city staff, city staff may have talked to you. By going to a third party, you kind of ensure due process and keep it out of your hands. Ultimately, you would decide and see a recommendation from whatever that hearing officer is, and you would have to certify it, either agree with it or disagree with it. I think, I know you asked a lot of questions. I think that hopefully answers all of those questions, though.
Thank you.
One else?
One more issue. As to the economics, again, the reason we have, you know, the possibility of going to JAMs or Ames, one of those mediation services, they are expensive, they're time-consuming. One of the things that we wanted the city manager, maybe myself, to look at was to see if there's a local attorney that could do this far more cost-effectively while still preserving the rights of the individual and giving them a full and fair hearing at a far more economical cost and, more importantly, quickly. Right now, we've heard the time lags for individuals getting this type of hearing before, like arbitration or a mediation board, can run up to six months. So with a local attorney, we can probably handle this within the next couple of months.
Thank you. At this time, I do not have any speaker cards. Therefore, I need a motion in a second.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move staff recommendation.
I have a motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Protem Ramirez. Any further comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor, may I?
Thank you. All right, so certainly my preference for this would be in using a local attorney with experience in matters such as this, so that the involved party shouldn't have to wait an extraordinary period of time for a resolution to this issue. And then just to echo really what my colleagues have said, I believe it's important that this former employee have the benefit of his or her appeal hearing being conducted by an objective and experienced hearing officer. Any given council is comprised of individuals who may or may not have expertise in facilitating these types of hearings and navigating potentially complex personnel issues. This former employee ought to have the assurance of knowing that his or her appeal will be conducted by a highly qualified, neutral hearing officer. And two, this community ought to know that important issues such as these are being administered with great care and without bias. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any further comments?
Yes. So I really don't trust the recommendation of staff. And to me, it's very obvious why. And if you don't know, you can ask me later, but I just don't trust the recommendation. And I'm gonna point out names and it's not to put anybody in trouble. Actually, this person doesn't no longer work here, but you know him. Christian Gunter was let go and he was told that he could not appeal. And he was under that assumption that he couldn't bring this to the ears of the city council. He is now a former employee. And I wanted to address that this is not to merit any hearsay for whatever good it serves the record. I needed to make that clear. The other thing is, I don't know how unbiased or nonpartisan it would be to have our city attorney recommend an office when he has been here for thirty-plus years. So when I say I don't trust the process of what's going on, it merits reason for me to place it on the record. When we do have a decision to review and certify, I don't understand how distant that would become from the potential bias that's been spoken about in this council with these five council members. So whether you want a merit or unmerit, I've given you a couple of things to think about, at least for the record. And those are the things that really do concern and bother me. So when I give you guys names, it's not because they're here. I'll never give someone who currently works here because I know it's called retaliation and that person or people would have retaliatory aspects or a fear or intimidation of that. So that would always be confident. But in terms of not working here, I will consider always revealing that information just for the credibility of what I advocate for and why my decisions are what they are and they're not being unbiased at this moment. So I appreciate your consideration of this matter.
Madam Mayor, may I inquire if I have just a few seconds longer? May I speak, Madam Mayor? All right, so I'm presuming, since our attorney didn't speak up, that we're all right here. But I was very concerned that the privacy rights of a former employee were being violated. I just need to hear for certain that we're okay on that count.
I would assume so. Again, I'm not familiar with the facts and circumstances surrounding that. Certainly, employees have certain rights and remedies. I don't know how long ago that was. And certainly, we would not comment on any of those personnel matters. That would seem inappropriate.
Thank you.
And I know I have a few minutes. And it's interesting how even city council here has to fight alleging a violation of someone's due process. I mean, this is not an employee. So I would admonish Councilmember Jones for even alleging that I was doing any type of violation without any citation of codes. And that was obvious that was done here. So we will always be able to defend our roles and our positions as to what we have to say. Nothing against her, it's just what she alleged as if she was an expert in that matter.
Any further comments? I have a motion made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Protem Ramirez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no.
At this time, we move on to public comments. I do not have any cards. Oh, one showed up. Drop I'm having. Rudy Mena?
Good evening, Mayor, council members.
You have three minutes.
Okay. Anyway, I'm a board member in association. They asked me these following questions and they told me to take it to City Hall. And what it is, is that, you know, the street lights, you guys put LDDs in there, they were perfect. And they wanted street signs where you could see them at night. They also wanted a bus stop for the seniors to take them down to, you know, bingo or some of the senior events. They also talked about speed bumps. What I'm saying is, with our association, we could afford this. The city doesn't. You know, wouldn't have to pay for this. We can do it ourselves, but we have to get approval from City Hall. And this is, I'm not representing the association, I'm representing as a homeowner. And this is what I, what do I do? Or who do I talk to to get this thing done? I like to save you guys money and at the same time, you know, build up our community. It has like maybe three hundred and fifty. It's right across the street from Spring Valley Lake, there's Ridge Crest, and it's on the other side. Thank you so much.
Who would we have?
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. You guys have a Merry Christmas to you and Happy New Year's.
Merry Christmas to you too. Thank you so much. That was the only card that I had. So we will move on now to reports from city manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor. We've got a few items to announce. First, we have Santa visit and photo opportunity this Thursday, December nineteenth, at the Victorville Activities Center from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. No cost. Bring the kids out for a photo opportunity, a visit with Santa. Maximum, we're gonna take that day as a hundred children, ages zero to twelve. Contact the Victorville Library. Also, as you know, the Friends of the Library is a nonprofit organization that helps raise money for the library in several ways, including book sales, special events, and movie games and videos. The Friends of the Fair is hosting another book sale on Wednesday, December eighteenth, and Saturday, December twenty-first, on both days, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And that's also at the Victorville City Library. We have a winter reading program continuing now through February, I'm sorry, through Friday, January thirty-first, 9:00 a.m. to just about a half hour before closing at the Victorville Library. We have some awards to give out to those that participate. Also, a festival of lights and tree lighting ceremony. We had a very successful event and that runs now through the end of the year. 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. is when the lights are operational and showing. So hopefully you, if you haven't seen it already, will take an opportunity to go check it out. Proud of the staff that has worked to make that all possible. Have some engineering items to report. We should, we are expecting a bid opening on December nineteenth for the second phase of the Doris Davies amenities related to the skate park at the Doris Davies Park. We're envisioning with that, our current anticipation is to bring both of the projects that comprise the skateboard park program and ancillary amenities back at the meeting that we have in January. It would have been our second meeting, but it's our only meeting currently scheduled in January. Also, we've got some development activity that's worth noting. Desert Ridge Transition Care Center has a seventy-four thousand, six hundred and thirteen square foot, one hundred and seventy-bed facility. Desert Ridge Transition Care Center has a 74,613 square foot, 170-bed facility that broke ground on 11th and Winona, just north of Nusqually Drive. Sterling Inn has an addition that's now under construction. That's at Ridgecrest and Ladera. It's 40 new units, expansion of existing convalescent housing. We've got Victor Valley College now underway with its tenant improvements at Saber Boulevard over at SCLA. They've started construction on their facility. 13B, which is the hydration source facility, is under construction. We're actually in the inspection phase, so they're nearing completion. That's a water bottling operation at SCLA. Let's see, what else do we have here? We have quite a few, actually. Many storage expansion, I just drove by that today. That's at Bear Valley Mesa Linda. It's an expansion of existing self-storage facility and enclosed RV storage. So that'll be a nice addition in that area. And then we've got a warehouse tenant improvement occurring at Industrial Boulevard. Construction's ongoing, and inspections have started on that facility. So with that, I think the only thing remaining is just to wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you very much. Now we move on to discussion and possible action regarding upcoming items for agenda items. Anyone have anything to agendize?
I do, Madam Mayor, if I may. Thank you. So for the last several meetings, we've updated, based on thorough review and analysis, several ordinances that now permit the city to increase fines and recover costs associated with various illegal activities. It's against this backdrop that I consider the extraordinary demand for work thrust upon our Public Works Department during election periods, and how that can perhaps hamper employees from carrying out other more important business of the city. I do think it's appropriate for the council to carefully look at what happens during election season when candidates choose not to comply with our current ordinance, including the placement of campaign signs on public property or public right-of-ways or in such a way that would pose a hazard to the safe movement of traffic and so on. I say "choose" because historically, the city of Victorville has been gracious enough to inform candidates of their inappropriately placed signs so that they could recover the signs themselves, which they should undoubtedly do. So with that said, Madam Mayor, I move that the council place on the next agenda an item for discussion and possible action wherein we consider the merits of receiving a report from our city manager that would include: one, current procedures followed by the city when a candidate is not in compliance with Victorville's municipal code for temporary non-commercial signs during an election period; two, what costs and/or other obligations and burdens may ensue to the city, and ultimately, the taxpayer, when candidates fail to comply with city instructions to remedy violations or remove signage post-election; and three, recommendations to update our ordinance if deemed appropriate. So that's my motion.
Is there a second? There be no second, that motion dies?
Did you have anything?
I don't. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Merry Christmas. Feliz Navidad y prospero año nuevo. May God be with you with joy, peace, and have a lot of fun. Because the new year is going to be even better than this year. And I know that the city and the city council are going to put forth a very wonderful year.
Which item are we on, Madam Mayor?
Agendizing.
For the upcoming budget year, we're going to be dealing with salaries and benefits. And I know that you do sporadic surveys in regard to how the benefits are stacking up, in regard to certain employees, but not overall. If you do that, I would hope that you would evaluate the part-time workers and whether or not you need to do a salary survey, and include that as an agenda item or at least agree to, have the council agree to have that included as a part of the presentation with the budget. You're going to start very quickly on the budget. In March, we're going to have our first go-around, and this is going to come really quickly. But this item has come up before, on how it's done, who arrives at it, how our benefits stack up, how our salary stacks up, are we competitive for the summer programs, and on and on. And we might as well agree to recognize that very early and start agendizing so we can be prepared when the budget gets here, and that's my request. I'm not going to make a motion unless the council feels it's necessary, but council may disagree. But if they, if they don't agree, I would hope that that would be passed on by the staff.
Is that, is that your motion?
Merry Christmas. I'll make the motion then.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
I would like to add a timeline to that. You said before the budget, didn't you?
Well, the budget starts, process starts in March. Part of the budget process, that'll be brought forward also.
And did you ask for discussion and possible action, or just discussion or just a survey?
To do the survey, and then include it as a part of the budgetary considerations for salaries and benefits.
Which would, which is discussion and possible action, I'm presuming?
Well, certainly, the budget would be a possible action. It's a mandatory.
Thanks for the clarification.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Gomez, do you have something?
Yes, so I make a motion to discuss and create possible actions on the agenda to allow for agendas to be put on within two weeks in advance for access to public and full efficiency of the inquiries in terms of time and accessibility, no longer than 60 days. So what that means is, everybody has 72 hours to read about 1,000 pages. Sometimes it could be a little more, maybe under 800, who knows? I like to see that extension for the individuals to have time to come and inquire about things that are in their head that they haven't had the time to read. This is quite, not too lengthy, but if you're not in school, I don't know if you're going to be reading some of this stuff, right? If you're not in practice, but if you're in school, you're reading already material, so you just incorporate it. That's my motion.
Is there a second? There be no second, the motion dies?
The second one is, I motion to discuss and for possible action to place on the upcoming agenda no later than 30 days to receive a full report and records attached of all tax dollars spent by executive teams to the events that they've been attending on city tax dollars.
Is there a second? There be no second, the motion dies?
The third one is, I make a motion and, a motion to discuss and for possible action to agendize the topic of unfunded liability reports, to address how much the city owes and what ordinances are addressed to pay back any unfunded liability and what plans the city has in incorporating or addressing to implement a savings plan to address those unfunded liabilities. That would be in our calendar no longer than 45 days.
Is there a second? There be no second, that motion dies?
The next one is, I make a motion to discuss and take possible action for the position of the city clerk to be an elected seat by the voters of the city of Victorville.
Is there a second? There be no second, that motion dies?
The next one is, I make a motion to discuss and take possible action for the position of the city council, which is our attorney, to be an elected seat for the voters of the city of Victorville.
Is there a second? There be no second, that motion dies?
And the last one is, a motion for translation services for individuals who need to understand in their government realm what is taking place. Apparently, we don't have anything of that nature here. I think the ASL understanding over there, I tried it, and it wasn't working. I haven't tried it again, so I don't know if they fixed it, but I know we don't have that translation right now.
Is there a second? There be no second, that motion dies?
I do. The San Bernardino County Transportation Authority is very busy. There's a lot of interest in regard to the east-west corridor that's coming again. A lot of interest because of the outside financial input in regard to the speed train to Vegas. And the latest to get discussion is a proposal to have HOV lanes coming from at least where 15 and 215 come together to some point. The original discussion was that it stops at 395. Second discussion was to bring it to Victorville. The third discussion, I think, which is more reasonable, is to have them continue to Dale Lev's Parkway. One of the things that I raised in the meeting, which is not popular, the council may not want to touch this and think about it for a while. In Victorville, we have three lanes leaving, and that's effectively two truck lanes and one for the public. In many, many instances, I've left Victorville for a meeting, and there's three truck lanes and none. If you have an HOV lane, then you'll have two truck lanes and an HOV lane. Nobody is willing to discuss trucks right lane, and yet they do it throughout the United States, except for passing. This is coming up. Council's going to be asked to take a position. And I suggested that before we do that, they talk about funding of a fourth lane, both from Northhead to Victorville to the pass, four lanes in both directions. That's not, wasn't a recommendation. It wasn't on behalf of council. Council hasn't taken a position on that. But I would request that staff look into this and see if it's necessary to bring back the council. We have a mountain desert division, the league. We also have the major high for mountain desert. But it's a hot topic. It's going to be discussed, and it's going to be coming up. And each of you will be asked an opinion on this very soon. So we might as well start the discussion so that we don't wait until outsiders tell us what we should do, that at least we'll be in a position of making a recommendation to that organization that has the authority to actually build it or cause it to happen. I really think the council needs to get involved in this one.
Was that just?
Well, it's just a report, because it's being discussed, and it's appearing on agendas, and there's going to be more discussion. And so you'll be, I assure you, you'll be asked about it as individuals, as council people.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're going into reports. I'll start with Ms. Jones.
Sure. Well, I'd certainly like to wish everyone a very, very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and for those who celebrate other traditions, I wish you beautiful holidays and the making of wonderful new memories. It's this time of year when I contemplate what love really is and what that looks like in everyday life with our family and our friends and our neighbors and our colleagues. And being a Christian, I'm always looking at what that looks like in its truest form. And if you're given to scripture at all, I would encourage you to read 1 Corinthians, chapter 13, verses 4 through 8. So again, very, very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone. Thank you.
Can I say it again? Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Ms. Gomez?
Yes, so I want to take the opportunity to thank this council because we do work as a unit, despite you may see sometimes a one-of-four vote or a two-to-three vote, whatever it may. This does function as a team. There's no hard feelings. And even though the tonality may perceive something of that nature, it just bluffs off. It's not there. And the decision to have a mayor and a mayor pro temp was decided in this council. And so I want to thank the individuals that understand that our leadership is required, and for whatever reason, whatever may have thought through the heads of these individuals, there is no backroom deals, there is no corruption. That's not what happens here. It's just someone requires justice to be required. And when we see justice in a certain particular perspective, we're going to be deciding on those moral values of what's good or what's bad and what's accessible, what's fairness in terms of opportunity, and what qualifies for equanimity. And so I congratulate these ladies for having that position and being strong. It's really difficult at times to receive certain criticism from individuals, and I understand, I receive a lot of it, and I'm sure you guys do as well, in all positions we receive that. And I also wanted to express that I did attend Arizona. There's a very great program that's at the national level where we get to meet other people from Connecticut, from Missouri, from Arkansas, from Virginia as council members. And the support that we have here is just not from our local municipalities across the state of California. But Naleo does offer wider vast, and going to Arizona, the three-day project inquiry of financial management and bonds and municipal bonds, and how you want to understand things of this nature to make the best decisions for your advocate, is something that I treasure. I don't need my own personal money or the money of the city. They actually fundraise, and a lot of us as council, if we apply for scholarships, can attend those, so I'm very appreciative. Igualmente, doy muchas gracias a las personas que tienen el tiempo de venir, y si no lo tienen, todas maneras, feliz navidad, feliz año nuevo. Y siempre el idioma lo voy a usar en español para que las personas que no nos entienden, las personas que no siguen en las redes sociales también. Esta comunidad es de todos nosotros, y desafortunadamente tenemos que seguir peleando lo que ya es nuestro. Muchas gracias por tenerlos aquí y por escucharnos tanto tiempo. Muy pronto tenemos más lenguaje para que ustedes nos comprendan. Thank you very much, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone here and watching through social media and so forth. Thank you.
Thanks for that subject. Can I ask you, how much money did I pay you? Blanca for your vote?
Nothing.
Oh, no, I'm being accused that I paid you quite a bit of money.
No, nothing.
Jim, do you have it? Okay, I do have. I would like to make the public aware of something that actually took place here at the closing of our last meeting. Something that I did not expect. I thought it was so cruel and so vicious. Mr. Jones, right there, could not handle the idea that his wife was not elected mayor. Ms. Jones left before I adjourned the meeting. And he actually came up to me and threatened me. I have witnesses. And you-
Nope, Jean, Jean, don't.
Well, can I speak?
I was, I was asking him to be quiet.
I'm speaking, please. You said that you would, that I was a disgrace to this city, that you would see yourself, that I would never, that I would never be elected in this city because I was such a disgrace. I have witnesses, and you were recorded even. Yeah. So anyhow, I'm sorry. I don't have a husband that can come and defend me whenever someone decides they want to come and attack me. I do have two sons. They could come in and do the same to your wife. How would you like that? However, they are not going to do that because they are not going to lower themselves to your lower standard. And you really showed your character, the way you spoke to me. So I just wanted to bring that up, so everyone is aware that that did happen. Outside of that, Merry Christmas. God bless you. Have a prosperous new year, and I hope next year it gets better. And I don't have men coming up and insulting me every opportunity that they have only because they know that I'm a widow and I don't have anybody to defend me. So if everything is-
Remember that we are elected to serve, not to be abused. And it gets tiresome, let me tell you, as a city council person, when people are complaining about personal traits, when they have nothing to do with what we do for you. So let me say, I was present when this happened. So what is being said is the truth. And it is a shock to me of what has happened and what did happen. And I myself have asked forgiveness. And I hope that you would all realize that we are here to serve and do our very best. And that is why we were elected and nothing more. May God bless you and keep you safe. May God bless you and give you joy. May God bless you and give you peace. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Madam Mayor, since we have the mayor pro temp who's gotten two bites of the apple, may I please respond? Thank you, Madam Mayor.